I just have two very quick things I wanted to, or three things, I guess. One, we're gonna move under new business, 5.1, up to 3.1, to help our guest here who has quite a ways to travel. And I'd also like to congratulate the librarians for their unique fundraising effort last week with the, on Pi Day, it was a pie in the face, and I understand that was very successful, and thank you for doing that. And I'd also like to congratulate Coach Gleason and the Windhawk Girls Basketball Team on a great season and a great effort, terrific season up at State. You did a great job representing them all, and thank you for all you do. And that's it. So, that's the city. Mayor Peterson, if you have anything?
I have two things, Your Honor. I also want to thank the librarians. Nothing's more satisfactory for me than to be able to chuck a pie in the face of a librarian. And then also, a quick, just to let the council know about the development code update. The Planning Commission has scheduled a public hearing on the development code update for April 10th at 4:30. That information is posted on the city website. We're sending out notices to affected property owners in downtown this week, and anyone with questions should direct that to the Planning Department. A council public hearing on the development code is planned for the second meeting in May, and Carlos and the staff will be here to give an update on the process at our next meeting on April 3rd. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
And we will go to new business, item 5.1, the city tax abatement bond sale.
And Terry Heaton from Springstead is here. I ask her to come forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this evening I'm here to present the sale results for bonds that were sold at our offices on behalf of the city this morning. These bonds are general obligation tax abatement bonds, and they are to finance several improvements, including the Levy Park Gateway Street improvements, Masonic Temple improvements, Sobieski Park Pavilion Construction, Prairie Island Campground, Barmannick Fields, a number of items that are listed. And I know this has been a discussion item that the city council has spent a lot of time on, and have gone through a hearing to approve the public, or the abatement bonds that are authorized this evening. The results of the sale are the yellow sheet that was distributed earlier, and you received eight bids this morning, and that's a strong number from the market. It also included 35 financial institutions nationally, so that's a lot of interest and excitement for your bonds. And the low bid came from FTN Financial Capital Markets, that is the first one listed, and their interest rate is 2.24 percent, and that compares favorably about 26 basis points less than our estimate a month ago of 2.505 percent. So, we're really pleased to see these kinds of rates come in. I know there was concern because the Federal Reserve, you know, had inched up rates again, and sometimes there is a direct correlation, sometimes not, and oftentimes we knew this was coming for months. It's built into rates a while back, and it really didn't have an impact of anything, as you can tell, it came in well under our estimate. The part of the rating being so high and having so much interest in the market has to do with your very high credit rating. You have a front Moody's, a double A1, and that is one notch from the very highest that you can get. And it's, you know, of course people, it's as secure as they get, so you get a lot of interest from the market. And if I could just take a minute to mention a couple of things from the report, I know Mary Berkter sent a report out to all of you, but just to mention for the public, the double A1 rating reflects the city's diversified tax base with institutional stability, stable financial operations, supported by strong operating reserves and low debt burden. The reading outlook, they talk to you about what could lead to an upgrade and what could lead to a downgrade. The upgrade is the substantial expansion of the city's tax base and strengthening of the city's resident income levels. And factors that could lead to a downgrade are the deterioration of the tax base, of course, and the reverse, material declines in operating reserves or liquidity, where material increases to fixed, you know, cost burden. Those are the things that they say are the very reasons that they have you so high, would be the reverse of those. And then, they always talk a little bit about operations, and one paragraph that I think Mayor is repeating is the, this paragraph that talks about management and governance. The city of Winona's management team has a strong history of conservatively budgeting both revenues and expenditures, leading to operating surpluses. The informal practice of maintaining 50 percent of the upcoming year's expenditures and reserves price provides a cushion for any unforeseen events, and that you have ongoing capital maintenance plan, and that you often cash finance those, which results in a very moderate debt burden. So, those are all very positive things in the report. This says a lot about the work that you do and the work that your staff does. So, congratulations on that report, and on some fabulous rates today in the market. And with that, Mr. Mayor, we would recommend the resolution which awards the bonds to the low bidder of FTN Financial Capital Markets.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to contact with Springstead and pick the low bidder.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry, thank you very much.
And we'll be sure to tell Moody's you guys are efficient, very efficient, too. Thank you for the jumpstart on traveling.
You're welcome.
Back to the petitions requests and communications, item 3.1, reappointments to the board of adjustment of John Kropchak and Chris Sanchez.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion by George and seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry.
Item 3.2, a request for color dash 5K event hosted by Signatogaama Fraternity to be held on April 29th. I'd make a motion to approve the license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. I believe there's some representatives here. Does anybody want to say a couple words? Introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Jordan LePierre. I'm one of the co-directors for the government community program. And it's just our second year running for volunteer services. We ended up having it successfully for no last year, so we can continue it this year. And if there's any questions you have, we'll do that.
Al has a question.
You said you ran it last year?
Yes.
Is this agreement identical to the agreement in place last year? I assume it is, I didn't really see anything.
Ah, yes, it's identical, only the difference is, is the dates.
Okay, well, obviously.
How much money did you make for volunteer services last year?
Something we made about $1,800, $200, so.
Substantial.
Had over 140 participants there, so it was a great turnout.
Anybody else have anything? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry, have fun.
Item 3.3 is a license agreement for the Faith Fest event to be held on Saturday, August 26th, and Christopher Parker is here if you have questions. I'd make a motion to approve the license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any discussion or questions? Would you like to say a few words about it?
Only that, we appreciate it, we did it last year, another second year thing we're doing here. Last year we had about 2,000 people come through, it was a free to attend event, and this year where we have plans, it'll be bigger. So, we're pretty excited about it and thankful that we have the venue that's available and managed.
Anybody have anything? Not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. You got it.
Thank you.
Item 3.4 is a request for street closure by Brad and Gabby Peterson to close the west end of Windcrest Drive on Friday, June 9th.
Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry.
Item 3.5 is a request to renew the liquor permit for the Winona Tour Boat. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry.
Item 3.6 is a request for temporary on-sale wine and malt liquor license for St. Mary's University for June 24th. So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry.
Under new business, item 5.2, the replacement of the rooftop unit at the Winona Public Library.
All right, we have a library director, Leslie here.
Mayor and council, our rooftop heating and cooling unit has lost its heat exchanger, and the estimate to replace that particular piece, assuming it's still available, is five to $7,000. So, we asked Winona Heat and Vent for a quote to replace the whole unit, given the age of the unit, and the other potential needs to replacing it, including bearings going on the condenser fan and a loose pulley on the blower motor. So, it just seemed environmentally and efficiency-wise like a good time to replace the entire unit.
I'd make a motion to approve the replacement of the entire unit for the $16,910.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Let me just ask, does it have routine annual maintenance on this? I assume it does.
We have, yep, we have worked with Winona Heat and Vent and taken care of it as best we can. This is the unit that regulates the 1987 addition to the building, so the circulation desk area and the second floor area right off the elevators. We were able to kind of eke through the rest of the winter because we have secondary baseboard heating in those areas. However, that unit is the primary cooling unit to those areas of the building, so we're eager to get it replaced before air conditioning season.
All right, Al. Is this unit that you're going to replace, first of all, when would it be installed? What's the life expectancy of the new unit? And is it going to be more, assuming since it's 30 years new, or more energy efficient than the one it replaces?
It would have a life expectancy of about 30 years.
Okay.
And, sorry, what was the first question?
When would it be installed?
We have a quote from Winona Heat and Vent to do the work. The quote is good for the next 30 or 60 days.
No, it's a question of warm weather and.
Correct.
Patron comfort, I guess.
Correct. Seasonally, whenever they can get up there to get it done.
Okay.
And the third piece of that was, yes, it would be more efficient, it would be tied into our automated logic controls, which is what the rest of the building already runs on, so it would certainly.
I assume that, because I read it.
Provide some cost savings.
In that council agenda item, so, great, thank you.
Any other questions? George?
And this is all funded out of the facility fund, correct?
It is a facility fund request.
Anything else? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry.
Item 5.3 is the residential rain garden program.
Will do pro.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Al?
Just a comment, I'm glad to see this coming back, and it seems to be a program that started with two, last year was three, and perhaps this time there will be more, according to our information before us, and, you know, just looking at this going, boy, this application form is lengthy, and perhaps it has to be for obvious reasons for funding, but to those who might want to be interested in this, I would encourage them to not be daunted by the application form, to go ahead, if they have that interest, to go ahead and go through it, because it's valuable, helps the city, helps us keep stuff out of the river and lake, which eventually ends up in the river.
Anything else? George?
How many gardens do we have in town right now? Well, I thought I seen Jen.
Sustainability Coordinator John Howard can tell us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Other than the five that are listed in our residential program, WSU has a few, we have a couple in parking lots in town by the Hardee's and also by the Co-op. There are a couple other small residential that have been put in by, just on residents for their own interest, but, so I'd say we're probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a dozen or so, all told, that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 5.4 is an inspections vehicle. There are bids from Sugarloaf Ford and Ford of Hibbing.
I'd make a motion to purchase the Sugarloaf Ford vehicle for inspection use.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? Al?
Probably all of us have done the math, but it's just a little bit over $200 more to keep the business locally, so I think it's a good investment with a company that's provided us with city vehicles in the past.
Okay, Michelle?
And I think, further on what Al's saying, I think the cost of going up to get the vehicle would probably offset some of that 200 anyway, so I think, you know, we probably could say they're about the same, just even though I'm with you, Al, on the whole idea that for $200 shopping local is the way to go, but really, I can't imagine driving up to Hibbing would be inexpensive.
No, just the time alone.
Yep, having two employees go get a car, yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Any comments? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 5.5 is a senior advocate position.
Malia, would you like to summarize this for us?
I would like to, Mayor and Council, just some demographics, and then this is the advocacy of annual, they're 2016. What is occurring for us is the start of retirements, and we have a part-time senior advocate who chooses to leave June 9th, it says June 8th in the council action, but it is June 9th. She's a 32-hour position. Because we share the advocacy position from the Southeast Minnesota Area Agency on Aging, they do fund us for about 24, close to $25,000, and we do get some dollars from the county, around $29,000. The other, roughly 50 percent of that budget is paid for with city dollars. What we are asking, and what SEMA is also kind of mandating through the Minnesota Board on Aging, is that this position be a degreed position. Our advocate, our assistant advocate currently is not a degreed position, she had years of work in the field. They have now come out with something that's saying prior to the year 2007, that's cool, but beyond 2007, we need a degreed position, and they put those degrees out there. So, we are asking that this be a full-time position, going up to 40 hours, that it be a degreed position, and what we're asking is that we're having two senior advocates as opposed to a senior advocate and with an assistant advocate. I believe it says in here, this year, the additional increase is in the range of 6,672 to 11,077. That would be dependent on the insurance coverage that a new hire would choose. I wanted you to see the demographics, you know, things that, this is the 2016 census saying the population 65 and over increased from 36.6 million in 2005 to 47.8 million in 2015, a 30 percent increase, and that's projected to more than double, to 98 million by 2060. And these demographics just keep telling you, you know, kind of preaching to the choir what we all know, that the demographic is getting older.
I think you're describing me here in this profile here.
And me. There's a few of us in the room.
Why are you looking at me?
I do.
Don't look this way. I'm too young.
Yeah.
Oh, Al?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you a question. With the churn in Washington, I guess, for a better term, are there any federal dollars that go into this program?
Yes, it is the Older American Act.
Okay.
So, the Older American Act, set out in 1965, that is all dispensed to the Boards on Aging in each of the 50 states, the Boards on Aging then dispense it to the regions. So, the AAA Southeast Minnesota Area Agency on Aging is where we get to that 25,000 dollars.
Also, are there any other community resources like this where people, if they have questions, can turn to that offer the same kind of information and assistance?
Not to the magnitude of what we do. There are some insurance-type counseling, for example, Catholic Charities has their MediApps that will help people with some insurance stuff, but a lot of those places will also be certain income guidelines. We are pretty much across the board for anyone. A lot of the advocates' time is due to Medicare and Part D and trying to make it through those systems for people.
And they can be complicated.
It's very complicated.
Yes.
Other comments or questions?
If I understood you right, Malia, you say there would be two advocates now?
Currently, we have one and a half advocates.
Okay.
And so, we do have two people. One is 36 hours a week, she chooses to stay at 36 hours, the current one. The one that is retiring is an assistant advocate, and she's at 32 hours per week. And so, we're asking that we have another advocate with credentials with, you know, the proper, you know, gerontology background, or a licensed social worker, those types of things, and a 40-hour position.
Okay.
This is also important because the one remaining, there'll be a good opportunity for some cross-training, instead of just being thrown into the job, and we also want this person to take over a dementia-friendly project from a senior staff.
Right, and thank you, thank you for reminding me of that, and the question that you just asked, Councilman Thurly, regarding other people that do these types of things. We just have received back the dementia-friendly survey results, and we are third on the list that people in, there were 278 respondents to the survey, we're third on the list of where people refer people to for dementia, and we aren't really dementia-trained.
Right, not yet, anyway.
But, we, correct, we're getting there. But, we are looked at as the place, so.
Good point.
I'd make a motion to increase to a full-time senior advocate.
My second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Discussion? George?
When do we expect this whole process to be done, then, the new one hired and?
Probably the first week of June.
First week of June, okay.
If I could push it sooner, I will, but, you know how I am, just getting that training.
Ready to vote? We will. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Thank you.
Item 5.6 is the Levy Park Gateway and Main Street bid authorization.
I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any discussion?
I have a question. Is there, will there be a possibility of, will we be looking at plans in the future of being able to connect that trail to the Marine Art Museum, which I think is really vital?
Yes.
I think the plan is when the road is redone there, on the Levy Park Road that leads out there, there would include a bike path. Anything else? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 5.7 is the extension of the Boathouse LLC lease agreement.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to extend that lease. Been a while since I've gotten to say that word.
You're not gonna order me, okay.
This one's just authorizing, next time I'll get it ordered.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry.
And item 7.1 is council concerns.
Well, we started with Jerry last time, so we'll start with Paul this time.
Oh, geez.
Hey, weren't ready for that, huh?
No, I wasn't. Well, I have a few things, and I apologize for length. First off, I have a voice back after nearly three weeks, and so I'm gonna use it tonight. First off is the Environmental Quality Board, and recently, the Minnesota Chamber of Commerce has lobbied for a bill to eliminate the EQB, House File 1291 and Senate File 1087. The EQB is an appointed board of key agency leaders and Minnesota citizens who, over the last 40 years plus, has been the watchdog for and made recommendations on our state's environmental health. The EQB is the last and sometimes only voice for Minnesota citizens when it comes time to review potentially harmful developments, resource extraction plans, or water quality issues. The state legislature has already eliminated the NPCA Citizens Board. This is an attack on the voice of ordinary citizens and our environment. I am deeply concerned about the lobbying efforts of the chamber and the lead of greater Minnesota cities, and question how our city can support these groups who are actively working to remove barriers that preserve our environment, health, and natural resources. My second thing tonight is on committees and reporting. I'm asking the city to provide me a list of city councilperson committee and agency appointments. I think after three months as a councilperson, it's about time I be included in some of those responsibilities I'm here to serve, and I'm willing to do so. I'm also requesting the formation of a safety and active transport committee that will ultimately make recommendations to the council on pedestrian safety and bicycle corridor development. I'd like to serve on such committee. I will also offer my services to any committee or commission that is either underrepresented or not represented by the council. Finally, I'm asking the council to allow direct reporting to the council from all commissions and committees so that their voices and decisions are not lost in the minutes of the meeting. This provides a stronger voice to citizen involvement. I understand that this might make for longer meetings, but I feel it's important for the process. Reports could be monthly, divided, or as needed, to prevent excessively long meetings. My third point tonight is about the resolution request by the Human Rights Commission last year. I want to express my personal support for the Nodapal efforts and the request by the Human Rights Commission to divest in Wells Fargo. However, I don't believe the current environment allows the city to first divest and then ultimately find a financial institution that does not support fossil fuel extraction and transportation. It's simply not possible. I recently experienced the inability to invest my official compensation in socially and environmentally responsible funds through the Public Employees Retirement Association, also known as PERA, administered by the state of Minnesota. While there is not currently an option for the city to completely divest, I personally commit to divesting in any fossil fuel company and respectfully request our city finance and HR offices to ask PERA to provide socially responsible investment options to city staff, administrators, and officials, and I thank the council for their time.
Okay, thank you. George?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to also join with the mayor in congratulating the Winona Senior High School Girls Basketball Team on a very successful season and a very strong and proud performance up at the state tournament. Justine Schultz, one of their players, is quoted in the paper today, "I think we made each other proud." The coach is proud, and I think we made Winona proud. Justine, you and your teammates have definitely made Winona proud. We were proud of you folks already, but you just took us to the next level. Job well done, and good luck to all those seniors as they move on in their collegiate careers or whatever. careers or whatever, career path that they choose in life to the nine seniors. Also, I would like to thank Kelly Barch for her years of service with the city. I believe her last working day is Friday. She is over at the Senior Friendship Center now, and thank her for her years of service and wish her good luck into her next endeavor. So, good luck to her. Also, I'd just like to offer condolences to just a couple of friends of ours from the East End of Winona. First of all, to a friend of all of ours, Matt Palowski. Matt passed away two weeks ago, and many friends and family and just many acquaintances gathered, and we celebrated his life. It was a very, very nice service. And for those of us, I think a lot of us have been to Poot's Bar. He bought it back in 1976, and he's been an owner of that bar for 40 years. And the city clerk called me one day and said that she's looking up some minutes where Councilman Borzakowski made the motion to approve the liquor license for Matt Palowski, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Edel, and she asked me if that was me back then. So, no, it was not. It was my father. So, anyway, for those that knew Pat, I mean, that knew Matt, he'd be busy right now running all the basketball brackets, which is a very, very big part, and wish his mother and his brothers condolences. He was truly a wonderful man, pleasant man, and he had a concern for the community and for his family and his patrons. And also, I'd like to offer condolences to the family of Florence Grupa, Florence who passed away here about the same time that Matt did, longtime East End resident, very kind and gentle woman. To her daughters and her son, Jim Grupa, Susan and Sharon, condolences, and she was a good lady. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Michelle?
Yes, I had one of the service groups ask me about the sign at the end of Highway 61 and Huff Street, and I remember when we removed it because it is in a bad location that's too low and the ground was rot, I mean, was rotting away. But they asked if we were going to put something back up or where we might put it, and I honestly had to tell them I couldn't remember what we decided. Does anyone remember?
We are working on another sign.
And do we know the location?
We don't, because we may actually put two of them up-
Okay.
-on either end of, on 61.
Okay. But I can tell them that they will be restored at some point, it's just a matter of where and when.
We may use different art, in which case they can come and collect their sign back.
Okay.
Their actual sign is down at the street shop right now.
Okay, perfect. I'll let them know.
I think, or was it, yeah, street shop.
Okay.
Yeah, the Redmond's Club called me and asked about it, and that's what I told them.
Okay, yeah, I had the Lions call me, so, okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I had.
Jerry? Nothing this evening. Al?
I appreciate George's comment about Matt Palowski. I think that place was owned by a guy by the name of Poot Cloggy. And my parents well remember that location, growing up in that neighborhood over the years. Speaking of signs, I've been noticing, and with the nicer, warmer weather, we're seeing a lot more of these little signs that are in city boulevards all around town for whatever it might be. I think that's, again, with the spring weather and the summer weather coming, something that perhaps we need to remind folks that you don't do that on city boulevards and property like that. I think there's some that the highway, MnDOT should take a look at on Huff Street and Highway 61 right now that are out there that probably are more or less a traffic hazard and should be removed. And final sympathy expression condolences to the family of Donna Helbley. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Under the consent agenda, there are two items, the approval of the minutes from March 6th, and the final adoption of an ordinance for updated campground fees, and the summary ordinance for that fee ordinance.
Will you approve consent?
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Al. Any discussion? Hearing none? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.